Good evening. I would like to call to order the May 13th, 2015 School Committee Meeting. The time now is 6:30 PM. We will be entering into Executive Session to continue discussion relative to collective bargaining with employee groups and individual employees in the strategy to be followed in our continued ongoing litigation. Do I have a motion entered into Executive Session?
I make that motion second.
I have a motion of a second. This requires a roll call vote. Mr. Dick, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Francis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Cutlass, how do you vote?
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye as well. At this time, we'll be entering into Executive Session and we're returning for our regular scheduled meeting at 7:00 PM. Thank you. Good evening. I would like to call to order the May 13th, 2015 School Committee Meeting. The time now is 7:05 PM. The May 13th, 2015 School Committee will be televised and recorded. Under the open meeting law, the public is permitted to make an audio or video recording of an open session at a public meeting. At this time, I would ask if anyone is recording tonight's meeting to please identify themselves. Do you have any newspapers out there this evening? Okay, seeing none. At this time, our first order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance. I'd like to ask our honored guests this evening to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I would like to see if we could entertain a motion to move up the presentation for The Little Mermaid.
I'll make that motion again.
A motion of a second on the floor to move up the presentation of our guest today from The Little Mermaid. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well. So at this time, I'd like to turn it over to Dr. O'Connor.
Thank you. I would just please to announce that we have a group of visitors here this evening. These are the Bulldogs on Broadway from Orion School. They had a sellout performance, a run of The Little Mermaid last weekend. I think you guys had three shows, was it? Or two shows?
Two.
Two shows, sold out. They were phenomenal. And they are here tonight to demonstrate their incredible talent and to give us just maybe a little sample of what it was like at the performance. And we have with us Marguerite Wijnett, music teacher at the school. She has been very instrumental in putting together these plays at the Orion School. So welcome. And tonight also in the audience are a cast of parents and support personnel. So we've the mic to welcome everyone. Are you ready?
The Bulldogs on Broadway proudly present The Little Mermaid Jr.
I've never seen a human this close before.
Me neither.
Shh. I thought you were an expert.
I'm handsome, sure. But yikes, the sight. Hey, ain't it?
I don't know, Scuttle. I think he's really handsome.
It's only to make my father understand. I just don't see how a world can make such wonderful things could be so bad. Look at this stuff. Isn't it neat? Wouldn't you think my collection's complete? Wouldn't you think found a girl? A girl who has everything? I've got gadgets and gizmos aplenty. I've got who sits and wants its galore. You want thing bombs? I've got money. But who cares? No big deal. I want more. I wanna be where the people are. I wanna see, wanna see 'em dancing, walking around on those... What did you call them again? Oh, feet. Flipping your fins, you don't look too far. Legs are required for jumping, dancing, strolling along. Ta-da! Just that word again? Streets. Up where they walk, up where they run, up where they stay all day in the sun, wandering free. Wish I could be part of that world. What would I give if I could live out of these waters? What would I pay to spend a day in warm on the sand? But children, they understand that they don't. Reprochment, their daughters. Bright young women, singing so many, ready to stand. Ready to know what the people are. Ask my questions and get some answers. What's a fire and what? What's the word? Burn. What's if my church would die long? Love too is more than a chore of mine. Out of the sea. Wish I could be part of that world. Sick of swimming out of the sea. Hmm.
Tell me, Johnny, you got trouble in the mind?
Sebastian!
What is all this?
Um, just a few knickknacks I collected, that's all.
Well, you ought to be ashamed of yourself. If you were horrified and knew about this place...
You're not gonna tell him, are you? Hope pleases about, he never understands.
Eric, listen to me. Down here is your home. The human world, it's a mess. Life under the sea is better than anything they got up there. The sea reaches all its green up and somebody else is living. You dream about going up there, but God leaves a few mistakes. Just look at the world around you, ready on the ocean floor. Such wonderful things surround you, what's always looking for? Under the sea, under the sea. Down here is better, down where is where the dang is from me. I'm sure it work for me, out in this stuffy seaweed. While we're deep, oh, didn't move out to the real, not under the sea. Down here are the fishes happy, as up to do in stairwell.
The fish on the land, they happy, they sad 'cause they in the bowl. The fish in the bowl is lucky, paying for worse of fate. One day when the box gets hungry.
Guess who got beyond the bay? Uh-oh, under the sea, under the sea. Nobody did us, try us, and neither snicker does see.
Under the sea.
We weren't the bubbles, under the sea. We had no troubles, like the blue bubbles, under the sea.
Then you play the flute, then harp, play the harp, the bass, play the bass. The bass play the bass, the trump play the trump. The flute is the dimples soul. The ray, he can play the wings on the string. The chop, chop, you know the black fish, he sings. The rock, I'm the cat, and all the birds, that, and all that goldfish glow. Look, a ship!
Under the sea.
Under the sea.
Under the sea. What is I need, the giddy brick, we is feeling to me.
He's feeling to me.
What I'm thinking of?
I love the sand. We got a heart to say she had been. It's just a... Under the sea.
Eric, can you jump in your boat? Eric? Hello? Oh, somebody's got to nerd that girl's feet through the floor!
I'm in love with someone, a human, a prince up here. Quiet, catch. Well, the answer's simple. You forgot to come film yourself. You can do that? My dear, sweet child, it's where I live. Tough unfortunate mercy like yourself. Poor souls with no one else to turn to. It so happens that your daughter made a bargain. She walked her voice land, a man of where it's dry. It's a fine goodness, yes, unworkable, unknown. There is a little something you could try. Perhaps you could arrange a sort of trade-off. Maybe swap your daughter's soul for say your own. Make this deal and set her free, or else she comes to suffer through eternity alone. Ha-ha-ha! Finally, the ocean belongs to me! And now you poor unfortunate soul, times up, you're through. Now the power of the sign has been once again made full. All the magic of the trident in the shell is not control. Spell's not true and forever over, ocean sea and show. Now see for yourself how bad it feels. You poor unfortunate soul. Wait! Oh, no, stop! I, I can't control it!
Eric, you tried it!
No!
Are you alright, Johnny?
Yes, thank you so much. You're the best friends a girl could ever wish for. What would I use to live for? Oh, I will ignore this whole shame you're beside you. What would I do to see you smiling at me? Now they can walk, now they can run, now they can stay all day in the sun. Trust you and me. And I will be part of your world.
There's our Bulldogs. That was outstanding. How about if we went around and you introduced yourself and tell us what character you might be playing? Would you like to start off?
Sure. I'm Cameron Whelan and I play Sebastian.
Oh, see, I'm Cameron. You can talk to the, either the camera or me. You don't have to talk to me. You're, you're good. That's alright.
I'm Cameron Whelan and I play Sebastian.
He's logging up all the time.
My name is Meredith Whelan and I play the role of Ariel.
My name is Will Forbes and I play the role of Prince Eric.
My name is Tyler Fongold and I play the know-it-all seagull, Scuttle.
I'm Alina Wallzack and I'm a fish.
I'm Alyssa Gray and I play the jellyfish.
I'm Anita Akademius and I play the seahorse.
I'm Brianna Gagnon and I play Scott Scuttle's blackened seagull.
I'm Erica Henkel and I play Blossom.
I'm Michelle Henkel and I play Jetson.
I'm Katya Mello and I play Ursula.
I'm Haley Poet and I play the mer sister Tina.
I'm Mia Gagnoni and I play the role, I'm a mer sister and I play the role of Arista.
I'm Emily Parr and I play the role of the violent chef, Chef Louis.
I'm Caitlin Cowler and I play the mer sister Alana.
I'm Jamie Burns and I play the role of the mer sister Andrina.
Did we get everyone?
Yeah.
Oh, went an awful lot, it's countless. Isn't that amazing? I'd like to thank this moment to thank Mary Ann Maranski, President of the Team, who led the production. They graduated, they did just a tremendous job putting this production together.
Thank you. Our costume designer, Jen Hankins, and our choreographer, Gretchen Martel. We had a huge staff.
Oh, this is tremendous.
It was our pleasure.
So, keep this in mind, we have a great program up at the high school, too. You saw the, the stage. In fact, our high school play is going on this coming weekend, so if you have some free time, you might want to come and see what the big kids are doing. You'll be very excited as well. So thank you for coming. We, we really appreciate it. This is a highlight of the meeting, I can tell you that. So parents, thank you all for attending. Comments from the committee?
I think, you know, everyone says the students love it. I think the adults love it just as much. And I have to say, I had the pleasure of going and you guys are fabulous. I was so impressed. I can't believe you're only fifth and sixth graders. There's only great things to come for you. And I hope we see you all doing great things. I took tomorrow high school and I'd rather love that. You guys are terrific. You should be so proud of yourselves. And the staff and the families and everybody that helped put it together, it was really a wonderful production.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna continue with our ready to schedule School Committee meeting. The next item on our agenda, we're gonna go over to our student representative, Brady Cashman, tonight to present his jury report for Tuscaloosa High School. However, I'd like to introduce our newest member who will be taking over, Mr. Justin Petrie, and he'll be taking over for the next school year. So we're looking forward to working with you as well, Justin, and we're gonna be straining tremendously. So, only you, Brady, for the report tonight.
Thank you. Notes from Tuscaloosa Memorial High School. Student Council's having their end of the year award luncheon next Monday after school and they're planning next year's calendar. We also participated in the Walk for the Hunger on May 3rd. National Arts Society's induction of new members was last night, some of you were there. The next week, they're hosting a prawn dress drive for the Cinderella Project. International Club on Saturday will be having a car wash at MVP to benefit Nepal. The freshman class council is delivering long-stick t-shirts that they ordered and they're planning events for next year. The Best Buddies Program at TMHS has been selected as one of the two schools en masse to be visited by Lauren Potter, an actress from the show Glee, who has Down Syndrome. She'll be here on May 29th from 9:00 to 10:00. The Chemistry Club, MIT students came in last week and did demonstrations with dry ice. The Junior Classical League is working with the wind to create a Junior, Junior Classical League. Tolerance Corps, the Gay Street Alliance, just had elections and they're looking forward to next year. Echo is planning their end of year ice cream social. And APUS History is putting up their annual wall of remembrance for fallen soldiers right here in the D-Pod, second floor. And Dr. Blue, come on board.
Thank you, Mr. Cashman. It was nice to meet you, Mr. Petrie. We look forward to working with you next year.
Thank you. We look forward to working with all of you as well.
Welcome, but thank you. We have no presentations scheduled for this evening, but moving right over to Citizens' Forum. Dr. O'Connor, do we have anyone that wishes to speak this evening?
There's no one that registered, but we do have a number of visitors. Is anybody here standing or speaking to the committee? Please. You can have a seat over at the computer. There is a microphone right on the table.
I took the microphone off because of the kids.
Sure, is that a written statement? Okay. And Mrs. Johnson, they probably that as well for the minutes. Oh, you need to set up a microphone?
I did, but I just...
Thank you. So, Kelly Rado, 840 Chandler Street, parent of Barry. This was actually a perfect segue for us, to talk about what we wanted to talk about tonight, staying in love with kids. It's the reason why we're here, just to keep a focus on where the year program has come and how far it's come and how hard the kids have worked, along with the current director. And although we're very excited to see that happen, we know that we just want to keep that momentum going. And this is just a list, obviously, you know, situated right here, it's, I think, the kids put together. The bullets, I just wanted to briefly go over with you, if that's okay? And I don't think that's too much time, we just want to emphasize how important this program is, especially to these kids that are coming up, our current kids. They'll be out soon, but we still have four to head and we just wanted to, if there is a viable program for these kids that are coming up. So, this is just a few bullets of what happened just in this last year and half, with all the hard work that was done. So there was several partnerships that came in to us through Moses of Hope, who worked out of the North Shore Music Theater. Spotlight Clay House, Actors Incorporated, ASA Photography, were coming in and photographing for the shows for us. The theater company increased in size. We don't have the dead numbers, but I would say it close to doubled in size in the last year and a half. There were bridges formed between what usually are very separate entities, theater and athletics. We had several athletes come out and participate in the program, which was fantastic and they had a sort of hidden talent there. So if we can encourage that a little bit more, I think we'd be in a great place. The community involvement increased, the pouring of people coming to the shows increased. So there was a lot of outreach going on, leading into this, the Patreon of the Arts Program, where we actually had sponsors from the community who were willing to put their money towards the program. They would have, you know, their, their names in our program for people to see, but it was welcome, you know? And it was family and friendship, but it was, it was mostly for the community to kind of get involved with us. This is kind of the most important as far as where the kids are concerned, the International Festive Society. We were the charter school for that program in Massachusetts. There was never a program here in the state. So the kids are all being inducted into the Festive Society, which is, it's similar to the National Honor Society, but for theater arts. They're all being inducted by the end of the month. We're having a little gala, a source, where they're all gonna be inducted and, you know, they'll, they'll get their certificates. And it's, it's good for them, especially the ones that do want to pursue this. But I think it's, it makes them all feel good, like they've accomplished so much and it's just something to kind of show them, you know? But it's, it's international, so it's not just something that's a local little thing. It's, it's recognized. So, we did run the two festivals, one of which, the first time was the International Festive Society, which in detail, so the recognition we got, we got the state recognition for that program, which was phenomenal, because, you know, we've participated in festivals before, not really made our mark very well there, but we really did this year. Even in the MTG, I mean, we were recognized for several awards in the club. The, we were on what happened within the school programs for the classrooms, and I know it wasn't a huge turnout, we talked about that for a lot of the theater arts programs within the school. We still feel that's viable for whomever you bring in. Maybe not so spread out, maybe it could be combined more, but I do think that there's still need some sources for, for classroom, for the theater arts. This is all in here. And we just want to encourage the progress and to at the very least sustain where we are, you know? The kids deserve it, they've worked so hard. And they're, they've been struggling the last couple of weeks to get where they need to be for the show, which we hope, you guys won't see. It will be great. You know, they're still working hard down there, but they're pulling it together and it's always, they always pull off a great show and we just really want to keep it going. So we just, we hope that the momentum stays. And the community helps, too. But I have heard, just a final note, I have heard from some of the up and comings who are concerned, their kids are in the shows, we've got several of my kids in the shows, this show. And there's just concern for the future of the program. I know we've been reassured there is one. We just want to make sure, again, that this stays, at least where we are.
Thank you so much for coming this evening. We truly appreciate it. We appreciate this document that you prepared and all those others that helped with that.
Yeah, it was a gift, actually. I can't take the credit for that.
Well, someone, someone we thank them, because that probably means the most special, since it's coming from the students as well. So, thank you very much for coming this evening, we appreciate it.
We appreciate the time and, and the support.
We'll see you this weekend. Is there anyone else wishing to speak in the audience this evening before we move along? Okay, seeing none. Mr. Cutlass, our clerk, will present the approval of minutes.
I approve, I make a motion to approve the April 14th reorganization minutes. Second.
I have a motion of a second on the floor to approve the April 14th, 2015 reorganization meeting minutes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well.
I make a motion to approve the April 14th, 2015 regular meeting minutes.
I have a motion of a second on the floor to approve the April 14th, 2015 regular meeting minutes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well.
I make a motion to approve the April 29th, 2015 regular meeting minutes. Second.
I have a motion of a second on the floor to approve the April 29th, 2015 regular meeting minutes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well. I have one, thank you, Mrs. Aguirre, one, Mrs. Johnson, and...
I make a motion to approve the April 29th, 2015 executive session minutes. Second.
I have a motion of a second on the floor to approve the April 29th executive session minutes. All those in favor?
Aye.
I have one abstention. Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well.
I make a motion to approve the May 4th, 2015 special meeting minutes. Second.
I have a motion of a second on the floor to approve the May 4th, 2015 special meeting minutes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well.
I'll make a motion to approve the May 4th, 2015 executive session minutes. Second.
I have a motion of a second on the floor to approve the May 4th, 2015 executive session minutes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well. Thank you, Mr. Cutlass. I'm now gonna turn it over to Mr. Cutlass again to present the paperwork.
Thank you. I'll move the April period ending April 23rd, 2015... I'll move the payroll period ending April 23rd, 2015, amount of $1,154,874.
Second.
I have a motion, I have a second on the floor, to approve the payroll period ending April 23rd, 2015. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well.
And I'll move the payroll period ending May 7th, 2015, amount of $1,131,874.
Second.
I have a motion, I have a second on the floor, to approve the payroll period ending May 7th, 2015. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well. Okay, we'll bring it along to the consent agenda. Anyone wish to take anything off the consent agenda? Seeing nothing, but a motion?
I'll make a motion to move tonight's consent agenda.
Second.
I have a motion, I have a second to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well.
Perfect timing. So, we go into these. I have a number of items I'd like to share with you this evening. The first, a very important document was sent home to all of our parents and children with special needs, and is distributed by the PPs in the district. Mr. Publoteer and the staff will be doing a presentation next Monday night, 6 o'clock, at the Ryan School for Parents, about a new model that we are looking at introducing into our K-4 schools. This is a model of delivery of services. I think it's going to be very important for parents to hear why we're making this change, what the change will look like, and how we believe this change is going to benefit our children. So, again, notice, did go home to parents this past week. We will be doing a one call to remind parents of this very important meeting, and I hope to have several school committee members, I thought we had, as well. I'm pleased to announce that we received a small grant from the Harvard Pilgrim Health Community Gardens. We have some money that has been awarded to the high school to start a garden to grow vegetables that will be used as part of our food service program. Janet Boyd at high school put together a proposal. It was submitted, submitted, excuse me, and funded. We're very excited by that. This is the season where you will be conducting superintendent's evaluation. At our last meeting, we submitted a timeline for you to follow. We also sent you the evaluation documents that are used as part of the annual evaluation of the superintendent. As you complete your documents, you'll submit them to the chair, who then will put together a composite of those documents. And at the June 10th meeting, we will conduct, in public session, the evaluation of the superintendent. You heard just a few moments ago, Catch Me If You Can, a high school drama production, will be on stage this weekend, the 14th and 15th, that's Thursday and Friday night, at 7:00 p.m. And on Saturday, May 16th, we have two performances at 2:00 and 7:00. Student tickets are $5, adult tickets are $10. This will be, again, another outstanding performance by our high school students. The Adaptive Ski Club is holding their Opry Ski Season banquet on Sunday, May 17th, at 2:30 p.m. here at the high school. I'm not going to be able to attend that event. I'm hoping we have perhaps a school committee member here in town, who happens to be by the high school. That is always a very moving banquet, as long as students have a great time with the ski club. Heath Brook is having their spring community reading day on Thursday, May 21st. I believe some of you have responded already that you'll be there, reading at the Heath Brook School. And then, if you have not marked your calendars, for May 27th at 7:00 p.m., the world premiere of A Movie If Only will be screened here at the Dr. Christie McGrath Performing Arts Center. This documentary, an informative film, was sponsored by the Mark Wahlberg Youth Foundation and Millennium Health out of California. Local connections were Mark Giesberg and James Wahlberg, brother of Mark Wahlberg, and a Massachusetts resident, were very instrumental in having the film produced here in Tewksbury. Not only was scenes filmed at the Tewksbury Country Club, but also in St. Williams Church and right here in our high school. And there were probably somewhere in the vicinity of 100 of our students as a background and maybe even more prominent role than just background that are in the film. We are having that unveiling screening, if you will, of the movie If Only on the 27th. And I can tell you, there will be dignitaries from national and state levels, along with law enforcement. This is drug-related. It's about drug addiction and the impact it has, not just on the addict, you know, herself, but family, and then that ripple out effect, and how many people are actually affected by drug dependency. Again, this will be just a outstanding evening, and I hope we have a great turnout in the town of Tewksbury. I'm looking to establish a policy committee meeting for our policy committee. We've not had one for a while, although we have gone through all of our policies. We now have to go back and look at some of the more complicated policies that we have not adopted. We need to start looking at what the policy state and how it might impact the school district. I'm looking for Friday, the 29th, at 9:00 a.m. If you could get back to me, if you're available to conduct that review on that date, we will schedule that. And then finally, last week, a flyer for Tewksbury Memorial High School, a parrot, was sent home. Unfortunately, the wrong flyer went home to our K-6 students. Three fifths of our K students, K to 6 students. That flyer had a T-shirt in it that I did not believe was appropriate for our relevant 3rd students. We have sent out an apology to parents that that flyer should not have gone home. It was clearly a communication issue, so we apologize to parents on that issue. Mr. Reed?
Sure, thank you. I just wanted to add to the showing of the movie What If?, that brought them on, and some other support services for parents struggling with their children in the part of the kitchen will be available for people to come to the movie. So, we're, be in partnership with the district, at least, providing those support services for our parents. Last week, the district held its Angelato, as usual. Hundreds of student art masterpieces were showcased for all to see. The chorus and the Tewksbury Memorial High School Band entertained us with their musical talents. And something new was added to the program, which I hope continues. The Tewksbury Memorial High School Open Mic, monthly student talent program, performed down here in the cafeteria where attendees of the art show were perusing the artwork. And these students brave enough to sign up to sing and stand in front of that large audience and belt out a tune. Surprisingly, not only do we have dozens of our high school students, we have a fifth grader, who must have been so inspired by the Little Mermaid production. She got up and did an amazing rendition of Ariel's song that we saw get tonight. So, the art show is widely attended. It's always a great success. I have the winners here. The names are the Best of Show winners in the district of 2015. At the Tewksbury Memorial High School, Corinne Doyle, a senior, was a winner of Best of Show. At the Wind Middle School, Sarah Cody, in 8th grade. At the Ryan, Caitlin M., 6th grader, I'm sorry, Meg Donald, thank you very much. At the Trahan, Lucy Malvi, in 3rd grade. The North Street, Lauren Bielacki, 4th grade. At the Dewing, Amy Przemski, 2nd grade. Dewing Full Day Kindergarten, Diego Cabrera. At the Heath Brook, Cara Taylor, in 1st grade. And the Heath Brook Full Day Kindergarten, Jayden McKee, were the winners of Best of Shows. Congratulations to them, and to our performing arts and fine arts teachers for their guidance and inspiration to all our students. Today also marks the second round of our statewide heart testing for our 3rd graders to 8th graders and the 9th and 11th graders. The students have reported back that they liked this portion of the testing quite a bit more than the first portion, because there's no writing. So, it's going quite well. Teachers are, I'd like to congratulate all the students and our teachers for all the learning and preparation that they've provided to students following them along.
Thank you, Mrs. Reed. Moving right along to community affairs, Mr. Francis or Mr. Cutlass, are you in the middle of the meeting?
We're waiting for a meeting to be scheduled. Should be scheduled after all the graduation.
Thanks for the update. For the Green Committee, we have a meeting tomorrow night, 5:14, at 5:30 p.m. at the Senior Center. I will be attending that. Tewksbury Education Foundation, again, this spelling bee will take place right here at Tewksbury Memorial High School on June 8th and 9th, and we're working in conjunction right now with grades 4 through 7. In the finals, when we brought the top 20 kids in each grade 4, 5, 6, and 7, we brought here, Tewksbury Memorial High Schools, to compete against each other to be the best feller in each one of those grade levels. So, that's pretty exciting. It was a great turnout last year, and we hope we encourage the community to get more involved and come and support your friends and other students within the Tewksbury Public Schools. The Tewksbury Special Education PAC Executive, the next executive session will take place on May 27th at 8:45. And that'll be right there in the superintendent's office. And I also wanted to just let everybody know that it will be rescheduled in the next meeting, and email will be going out once that new date and time has been established. So, stay tuned for that. Look for email coming from your Special Education PAC. The Wellness Advisory Committee, the next meeting scheduled, that again, will be May 27th at 3:30 p.m. And that'll take place in the superintendent's office. And we'll keep it updated after that meeting. As Dr. O'Conna mentioned before, the next policy meeting will be 29th at 9:00 a.m. And that'll be Mr. Dick and Mrs. Paulino. We're going to move right along to old business. I'm going to try to little cue Dr. O'Conna for the first item on our old business.
Thank you. You have the report that we referred to at our last meeting. We had had a, received an oral report from the company that was employed to look at mold fungus spores at the Trahan School. You'll notice from the report, though, that we only sampled a single room at that time because of other concerns that have been brought to my attention. The company recently was back, I believe, last week or early this week, to continue to spot check throughout the building. We're looking at three different locations now in the building just to ensure that we do not have mold growing in the crawl spaces, ceiling areas, where there were leaks. This report indicates that there was no noticeable mold or spores in the air in the samples that they took. We'll have more on this probably at our next meeting in June, as we continue to take a look at those issues of the schools.
Is there any comments or questions for Dr. O'Conna regarding that recent testing in other fields? Seeing none. Okay, moving right along to the science textbooks this evening?
Okay, as you know, five teachers in the K-4 through 5 have been piloting science fusion from Harvard Full Day Midland. Our goal in piloting our science series was to pull, one, to bring relevant nonfiction and science content aligned to the next generation, the new science standards, to our literacy program for our elementary grades, as well as to have daily science lessons and related labs, as well, related to the next generation's standards. Those standards are close to being adopted nationwide, as well as in the state of Massachusetts. I expect we adopt those standards this summer. So, with that being said, it was very difficult to find science materials, full-fledged series that met both of those goals across the line to the standard. What we did find, and as you know, in the evaluation we have front of you, we piloted just this one series. This series not only had all of the components, we're looking for literacy, lab, online technology integration, but also was aligned to the next gen standards as best as possible with the promise, with the contract, that once those standards were adopted, that this book would be rewritten and be published aligned to those standards. It's a consumable text. So, having known that, we piloted this series, and the evaluation came out very, very good to see it. The overall average from all five teachers is a 4.26, with 5 being the highest score. Three is that they actually cannot judge some pieces of the series, because they weren't able to use them, or we didn't have them available to us. But I think you'll see, the strengths of the series were the features, the learning activities, the teacher support materials, and the student assessment. If you look at the comments, especially from the students, I think it's important to note, one, the teachers are heavily looking for more science materials. The students liked the lessons in the online component, but thought some of the lessons maybe went on a bit too long, or that there were too many assessments. So, I think that's something that we're going to have to look at moving forward, if we choose to adopt the series. The teachers certainly would like more ongoing training with the series. While it was very useful, easy for them to implement as the nonfiction literacy. I know that they want some more training in the areas of the lab, in the lab materials. So, tonight, I'm not looking for a vote on the series, but to announce that we feel very strong about science fusion for our grades 3 through 5. And for the next, well, up until our June 10th meeting, the series will be on display. Citizens to come and look at this series, so that when we come back in June 10th, I can make a recommendation of whether to purchase or not.
Do you have any questions? Is there any questions for Mr. Regan?
Send the question. Send the question.
Oh, that's, yes, in fact, this would be coming from the One Time Funds that we were granted this year from the town manager for text books. And science is an area where we need to evaluate district-wide, all grade levels, our materials. We've updated our high school science materials, this 3 through 5, and K through 2 is really needed, because we quite simply just don't have, other than some kids, a regular daily science lesson built into our curriculum.
And what do you think you'd be looking at for 6 through 8?
Next year, as well as K through 2.
Okay.
The Pearson series that we purchased for 6 through 8 is really nearing its end. We have, the automatic shipments of the workbooks and the online series is ending this year. So, next year, we will, that's something that's where it might happen. We have several teachers now investing their time voluntarily in a cross-district curriculum mapping project aligned to the next-gen standards. What we're doing is, in backwards design, looking at standards, developing the assessments and the units, and then using open source, free resources, how can we build our science program? So that we have some time before we, you know, purchase something in the middle of the year.
I'd like to commend you, Mr. Reed, because I know an area of concern, an ongoing area of concern has always been the area of science. And I think that we did have outdated materials, and that certainly wasn't helping our students. I think we performed, you know, exceptional at the high school. I think we have materials. But I do think coming up, so this is actually great to see. I'd like to see it sooner than later, certainly even at the 6 and 8 grade, you know, just to make sure we're consistent going right up. So, by the time they do get to high school, they are able to tap into all those different opportunities that we have available at that school level. More science to get, you know, we're going to see more kids taking those AP courses and taking those honor courses right off the bat. So, thank you for all the evaluations you've done on all our textbooks, because I think this is a great plan and a great strategy, and we are concerned and interested in that.
And equally, in our related program, nonfiction text is always a highlight or a priority. So, what better nonfiction text to bring in, and relevant science content throughout each grade level? So, this is a really good direction for both contentists.
I think that's good. I'd love to make sure we get that information right up to the community to, just to let them know the update on, any answers that we've made, any changes we've made from these years. So, I think that's important, because we're up in the community, we always hear about science. And I think we've made a lot of gains, and I just need to advertise that now. So, thank you for all your hard work on that.
I have a short question.
Yes, Mr. Reed.
You just noticed that the proposal expiration is a good reason.
You know what? I met with Steve Haggy. We have the same, I have the same proposal in front of us now. The proposal now runs through July 31st of 2015. And I'm glad that you brought that up, because while the proposal is approximately $73,100, if you divide that amount of money by the seven years, this is a seven-year contract, by the 980 students, looking at approximately $10 and $0.10 per year, per year, that's really low money for what we get out of this program. And it also includes all of the supporting materials and teacher resources, and online capability for all those students in the set, what's full setting is.
Thank you, Mr. Regan. Moving right along, Dr. O'Conna, you going to talk about the update to the Tewksbury School Community Meetings, several?
Sure. You'll notice that there are a number of dates below in red, that we have added meetings. You'll notice that in September, it was... You'll notice that in September, it was scheduled just for a single meeting on the sixteenth. We've added a second meeting on the period, will be a full business meeting. We also adjusted meetings in October, with October fourteenth and October twenty-eighth giving us two meetings in October. We have a single meeting in November, and then we will have a single meeting in December. However, please note that at any given time, all it takes is three members to initiate either the cancellation or the addition of a meeting. We're more than willing to meet whenever we feel there is a need to do so. So at any time, if you have the month of November with a single meeting, and you felt as though November fifth might be an appropriate time to have a meeting, and we have business items to attend to, we certainly can schedule that. Okay?
Is that something that we're gonna bring out for the next meeting? Vote on it?
No, it's, you don't need to vote on it, it's just the schedule, we schedule meetings. All our obligation is to host those meetings in an appropriate fashion. So this is the schedule from now through the end of two thousand and fifteen. In September, probably around September thirtieth, Mr. Johnson's gonna make note, we'll hand you the schedule for two thousand and sixteen, that you can vote on.
Great, thank you. And then move right over to you for, and then you brought back the high school proof of our new expectations and core values and beliefs.
I'm gonna have Mr. Regan talk about what you have in front of you.
Sure. What you have here, this is a part of our NEAS process, where the staff here at the high school establish the core values and beliefs that they will live by, and whether it be the students and the staff. So I think you can see, they have that all members of the Tewksbury Memorial High School community will rise and demonstrate that they're trying to create a branding of what our core values are. If you've been here at the high school in the morning, you know that the students on a daily basis remind the student and staff of what our values and what our belief systems are. So you can see that priority of respect, integrity, skills, and engagement, and our learning expectations are very selfless, linear around communication and solving complex problems, working independently and collaboratively, clearly respect rises as a priority as well. So this now becomes the mantra that we're here, our students will probably cite in the morning, and our NEAS coordination of those, the evidence that we produce next year will be in these areas as well.
Thank you, Mr. Regan. Does anyone have any questions or concerns? Okay, moving right along to new business and new trend, over to you, Dr. O'Connor, for the WestEd Staff Development Proposal.
Thank you. Our last meeting is to help give a presentation on the changes to the service delivery at our K four schools. We had a number of questions about WestEd, the consulting firm that is working with us, providing staff training, meetings, co-planning with district personnel, and the big, big question was, what was the overall cost? As you can see, we put together their proposals for your review, the overall cost for training, which includes twenty-five onsite days, their WestEd staff will be here working with our staff, is a total of sixty thousand dollars. This money is not budgeted, it is coming out of grant money, it is available to the Director of Special Education for staff training, staff development, the funding will be coming out of there. I know you had a number of questions about funding sources, so this will not impact the overall school budget at all.
I understand, it's a thousand.
Multiple grants, multiple grant sources, yes.
Does anyone have any other questions or concerns? The only thing I'd like to add is that I believe there was a memo sent out today that Mr. Pelletier will be hosting on May eighteenth, two thousand and fifteen, from six to seven P. M. At the Ryan School, a presentation on the new model, and inviting the community to come in, and, and avenue for people to ask questions and raise concerns. So I would definitely encourage people to attend that May eighteenth meeting, because I think that's an important one, and it's gonna unveil the model and give everyone opportunity to feedback. Moving right along, we have the out-of-district special education transportation bid.
Thank you. This is a rather complex bid that I'm asking you to approve this evening. This is for special education transportation for both in-district and some out-of-district. What makes this bid complicated is that three communities went in on this bid. We have the communities of Belrika, Chevsford, and Tewksbury combined in an effort to save money. Instead of going out on a single bid, we went out with the three towns. This is similar to what we did three years ago, and we felt at that time, we experienced quite a bit of savings as a result of developing this consortium of communities that went out to bid as a single entity. The bid that you have in front of you is Tewksbury's portion of a seven million, three hundred thirty-three thousand, three hundred thirty-five dollar bid. Our portion for our transportation is two million, eight hundred sixty-four thousand, three hundred twenty-three dollars and eighty cents. That's what we are asking you to approve. Please keep in mind, although this is a single bid for seven point three million dollars, we are not obligated to pay anything beyond the two point eight six four million dollars. Overall, there is a savings to Tewksbury in excess of six hundred thousand dollars from this year's bid over, or this year what we have budgeted, over the life of the contract, over the three years. So there is a significant savings for the town of Tewksbury with this bid. If you have questions, I'll be more than willing to answer them. Mrs. Matthews is at the Massachusetts School Business Leaders Association's meeting, Annual Conference down in the Cape, but I think I might be able to answer all of your questions.
Does anyone have any questions, Mr. Dick?
Just a quick question. So we budgeted for roughly like three point four million, and it came in under that?
No, no. That, that overall cost is two point eight million. We budgeted approximately one million dollars a year for special education. It's gonna cost us less than a billion. If you take the two eight six four, divide that by three, you're gonna be somewhere in that nine hundred thousand donation. And we budgeted a little over a billion, Paul. So there's gonna be a savings of a couple hundred thousand dollars possibly, possibly. And I say possibly, because I can't predict that what we told the vendor were the number of students and the routes, the schools that would be, our students would be attending. That could change. That number could go up, could go down, which helping in, even a little more savings. So there is that variable with this type of a bid.
So it's a hundred thousand?
Savings, a pro, over a hundred thousand dollars a year in savings. Probably cost her two hundred thousand in savings.
Just want to clarify that.
Correct. So in, in this first year, well over a hundred thousand dollars in savings. I don't wanna give you an exact number, just because those variables could impact the bid in a negative way to us, resulting in us having to spend perhaps a little more money. I can't imagine it'd be a hundred thousand dollars more.
No, it's just pretty, no, it's not two hundred thousand dollars more.
No, it's less.
Right.
It is less.
And my other question, Chair, is, so the all three you bid on this is a...
Yes, it's a single entity.
And has the other communities already...
They're accepting it now. The bids were opened last month. I believe it has been on the agenda of one of the committees already, and I believe it has been accepted. The other is, is pending, much like it is here tonight.
And these are the two...
There were two bidders. Our current provider, MAC, bid, as you, you see, their bid overall for the three towns was almost two million dollars more than what TMC, Trombley Motor Company, did. So that was a significant increase. In fact, the business managers in the three communities were so concerned by the discrepancy that they sat with the owner of Trombley Motor Coach and worked with him, and his routing people to ensure that his bid was accurate. And they came away with a guarantee from the owner of the company that he believed his bid is accurate and will live and support that bid.
Does anyone else have any other questions, Dr. O'Connor?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, Dr. O'Connor, Trombley, they're fairly local and great, and I mean, do any of the communities use them?
Yes. Absolutely, they are very familiar with, they do, a number of districts provide transportation in the area.
And then, my only question, because you answered a few already, was, so this will be a change for us, because we have used Merimac in the past. This will be a new vendor for us moving forward, which is fine. How many years have they been in business, or, you know, what's their reputation and so forth? You know, it's not a bid process, I'm sure we...
I believe this is the same motor coach company that was providing transportation when I was in school in Lawrence. They've been around a long time.
Okay, so...
Yes. They weren't providing, I don't think we had busing back then. You walked to school. But yeah, they have been around an awfully long time. They've been in the Merimac Valley, providing coach service in a variety of ways. They were community bus people at one time, they had contracts for that. They did a lot of charter work over the years as well.
Well, I mean, this certainly seems like an opportunity for us to be more cost-effective, and it seems like we've got our homework. I think it's, you know, a wonderful opportunity that the bid is coming in much lower than what we had anticipated, and it's certainly maintaining the same level for our students, which is really the most important. So at this point, this will require a roll call vote, because we're dealing with plenty. Could someone make a motion to accept the bid during this evening?
I'll make that motion, Chair. To accept the out-of-district special education transportation bid presented by our district manager, Sherri Matthews, approved by Dr. O'Connor, for a three-year total of two million, eight hundred sixty-four thousand, three hundred twenty-three dollars and eighty cents.
Okay, so I have a motion, and I have a second on the floor, to approve the bid between the Tewksbury Public Schools and Trombley Motor Coach for a three-year contract in the total of two million, eight hundred sixty-four thousand, three hundred twenty-three dollars and eighty cents. Okay, stated earlier, this should cause a roll call vote, based upon the financial impact it has. Mr. Dick, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Francis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Cutler, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chilla votes out as well. Please thank Mrs. Matthews for the research and the work, and I think this is a wonderful opportunity for the district. Okay, moving right along, the next one is the, as soon as this is finished, is the school year staff survey.
The annual office of the Assistant Superintendent for Children's Instruction surveys of staff to really see where the greatest need is for professional development. Keep in mind, all professional development and professional learning opportunities need to be aligned to the district-wide goals as well as the, and then the school improvement goals are aligned to the district's goals. This year, I created an online survey for a greater efficiency, and also included the entire staff, secretaries, the aides, all of our groups that work with children, because I believe we need to know where do they feel that they need our support to better serve the district. I split the surveys into categories, instructional and organizational technologies, like Google app certification, App to Brainbook, Teach Point, application that we use for our teacher evaluation, et cetera. And then I split another section of P E opportunities under the category of meeting the needs of all students. And, and truly, our goal, or our focus for, in alignment to our district's goals, is really, how will we close that achievement gap? How will we bring strategies through every classroom for all students that really do that? So, for example, you see close teaching, differentiated instruction, user data for formative assessments, those are the types of strategies we'd like to build our staff skill in, and E L L teaching strategies, et cetera. So this survey will assist me in not only planning the summer P E program, but also for the next full school year, as well as common planning, staff development opportunities, conference availability to staff members, and assorted professional activities for administration. So getting lots of grade teacher input, but also in areas where they're experts. We have, we have a wealth of expert educators amongst us. They have a lot to share with each other. Some of them are teaching even at the college level for sort of different teaching strategies. So we're accessing their expertise, are they willing to host some sessions with their colleagues, and we're getting lots of great information you might have seen in the consent agenda. I've also joined courses with approximately twenty-two other districts. We're collaborating and building what's called MPE, the Northeast Regional Educator Network. And what we're trying to do is provide great learning opportunities, put those lower incident educator groups. For example, we have one librarian in the whole district. It's, it's difficult to find learning opportunities that are developed just for libraries, or just for the audio, just for the music teacher. So through our surveys that we're all doing, we are then networking those groups of educators. So for example, all the P E and health teachers could be working, networking with those other districts for some great teaching. So I think we have a good plan for building good learning opportunities for all of our educators in the next school year, and I'll record out what that will look like once we get all of that data back.
Thank you, Mr. Regan. Does anyone have any questions or concerns, Mr. Regan? I would just like to reiterate what you said. I mean, I think, I'm pleased to know that we are surveying our staff. I think it's important to prioritize with them what their needs are, specialty or professional development, so I think that's truly wonderful, and you're asking them what they need, what are the resources they could utilize to help computer drop season benefits, I think that's wonderful. The one question I had is, I know we do that survey, but after we have the actual professional development, do we do an evaluation where, use those evaluations, say, would I actually bring that professional development, either presenter back again, or that theme again, or does it help you plan for the future?
It does, and one, some feedback that we got from the staff through the end of the year is, well, why do we still have a paper-based evaluation system? And this summer, I'm working with my administrative assistant, Jeanne Morak, to go, and we have Google Apps for Education now. We use Google Forms all the time. In fact, we're using it for the survey. How do we, you know, moving to the twenty-first century with our evaluation process of the P E, and then how do we give that feedback immediately back to the presenter? So that's something that is a goal of mine, and as I said, my administrative assistant next school year, because we need to make that more efficient. I mean, she's still telling every single page, and I think you'll be really pleased to see the advances that we're continuing that area. But we do, we evaluate, we take very strict attendance, we produce a professional development point certificate to all our educators. As you are probably aware, they have to keep up not only P E Ps in the content area, but also in the area of special ed, and in the area of mal, the out, instruction. So we make sure we provide a variety. I think we provided over two hundred and fifty-ish sessions this year alone, so far.
Thank you for your input, Mr. Regan. Okay, we're gonna move right along to number four, Tewksbury Public Schools, fees here do update.
Thank you. At your request, we provided information on our fees that we charge throughout the district, ranging from our high school athletic fees to kindergarten fees. We've given you a cost breakdown, intake, funded, funds that we, we take in every year, what we're spending, and you'll see some of the activities are in the black, while others are in the red. We've made a recommendation this evening to reduce one of the fees for next year, and I'll come to that in a minute, but I just want to go over, currently, our high school parking fee is two hundred dollars, athletic fee is a hundred and fifty dollars, with a six hundred dollar family cap. Our high school club fee is seventy-five dollars, wind school athletic fee is thirty, wind school club fee is thirty, Ryan School club fee is thirty, preschool program, two hundred and forty dollars per month for our preschool, and our full-day kindergarten is a flat fee of four thousand dollars. You look at the second document, you'll see the breakdown of what we take in, what we spend, and what the balances are, projected balances as of July two thousand and fifteen. You'll notice the athletic revolving, then most A B Cs, it's in the black at thirty-three thousand. However, high school athletic fee program is in the red at approximately twenty-eight thousand dollars. The others, you can see as you go through, but if you take a look at the parking fee on page, on the back page, you'll see that our projected balance as of two thousand and fifteen is fifty-eight thousand dollars. That's a... That's a pretty high balance for $200 parking fee, and it's our recommendation, and it was today, to reduce the parking fee next year from $200 to $150, and a year from now we will take a look at that balance to see if we, we still can maintain that $150 fee or possibly even lower it in the following year. We're also going to take a look at a couple of other fees. I, I just want you to note that that full-day kindergarten, actually, we're showing a loss right now of $70,000 in that fee, because the number of students currently enrolled in kindergarten, to break even, we need about 24 students per class, we could not have that number, so we are running in a bit of a deficit that will be reflected when we do the end of the year report on this number, so it's going to drop by 50%. You're probably going to wonder, well, why can't we reduce this, why can't we reduce that? Well, the, the key to the, the fees is really the athletic fee, that, as you see, generates an awful lot of money. User fees projected is $117,000, it's actually even higher than that, because we do have a number of students who are entitled to participate without a fee, those are students who are homeless students who live in poverty, et cetera. We also have approximately 25 students that we continue to chase from both the fall and winter program, that is a small percentage of students that participate in that program, but our athletic director and the high school staff are constantly working to bring in those funds. So, at another time, perhaps this time next year, we're going to take a look at funds, and we'll come back to you with some recommendations to either maintain or to reduce funds a year from now when we've had a better chance to look at where we are this time next year.
Mr. Francis?
Thank you, Dr. O'Conne, for your report. The biggest rate that we're lowering the fee down from $200, $150, and as the, as the other fees aren't going down, I think it's a good thing to note, as you look around the other communities in the area, fees which are already higher than our fees to begin with are going up dramatically, which leads me to my next point, I think that the eventual goal is someday to have this to zeros.
Absolutely, yes.
And I think we're heading in the right direction, at least they're not going up, at least we'll be able to afford one of the more contentious fees for the high school bike coming down by 50, so I think it's a great first step, and I hope we continue to see these numbers go down. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Francis, is there any other comments? Mr. Cutlass?
Does every student, every driver have those spaces?
Every student, senior that signs up initially, and juniors have spaces. We have...
Sophomores aren't, they sign up the spaces after semester two, and then what happens is spaces that are, we often have students and after January 1st who've got to get their license or have a vehicle. Right now, every space between staff and student is permitted.
And then I just have one comment, or I don't even know if it's possible suggestion. I'd love to see in the future us to go where people can pay online and then we can run reports, so you're talking about certain people who haven't paid and so forth, it's really hard to track that down on a paperless system. I think if we, we make great gains in other areas, being able to pay online, I'd love to see us get to the point at the high school where not exchanging cash and we're able to allow our families and students, parents to access everything online.
And I, um, Mrs. Matthews wanted me to also note, if you notice the bottom corner of each of the categories, she's looking to that for that reason, every category other than the parking fee is actually running at an actual loss this school year 2015 in comparison to school year 2014. So, I know that she feels if we can be more efficient with how the fees are collected, then perhaps we can see a shift. So, for that reason, she didn't want to touch on those, because they obviously fulfill the needed funds, low tech fee, and other costs.
Thank you, Mrs. Reed.
Madam Chair, I'll make one comment. I just kind of want to jump on what Mr. Francis said, you know, this is the second year that we've done something positive in the fees area. Last year, we did the, the family cap of 600, you know, like Mr. Francis said, it's, zero's the goal. It's just another positive thing that the district's trying to do for our families that are struggling, so, you know, just to point that out that we did something last year, this is a positive, that we go for, obviously, for the parking. It will be good to reevaluate the parking again to see if we can go down in that same direction. I do think that it wouldn't be a stretch next year to, you know, just looking at the numbers and how athletic salaries might have been paid one year versus the other, that I think, you know, you keep, you do see the revenue, you do see some of the, the negatives, right? I do think it wouldn't be a stretch to reduce the user fees at some point, at some level, you know, just to, just to show it moving down, whether it's $25 or something, that would be a good goal to set for this committee and for the administration, and I think that goes, like Mr. Reed said, the automation, I think that's going to be, you get a lot more accountability, you're going to be able to make, make some, make it a little easier for, for people to pay, so, I don't know where hardships come into play on that and where you can go with that, but, you know, I just, I, I, the evaluation of who can pay, who can't pay, I don't know how that works, and it'd be good to know, oh, we're on that too next time.
I can, I can share that with you right now. Students who live in poverty, students who qualify for free reduced lunch are exempt from user fees, homeless students who are enrolled here, whether they're new students or Tewksbury residents that are considered homeless generally are, are exempt from fees as well. Other than that, everyone pays. And if you don't pay, ultimately, or ideally, at graduation time, you know, we, we check everybody, and if you have, you have a tally mark in the ledger that says you owe from freshman year, you know, $150 because you ran track, then we say to them, I'm sorry, you're not, you're not getting your diploma because you owe $150. And, and we do that every year, and it generates quite a, quite a buzz in the community, but that's what school districts do. You owe us a book, if you lost when you were a freshman, that book is $49, you wanted the diploma, you're paying the $49.
So, I just want to applaud Mrs. Matthews' effort, Mr. Libby, who was instrumental in this list together, the administration, as Mr. Francis said, we are in line with other districts, even below what other districts are paying, you can, we can read that in the whole side.
Nice paper.
So, thank you very much for just looking at this for our, for our kids.
Would someone like to make a motion regarding our reducing the fee, the parking fee from $200 to $150?
Make that motion, Madam Chair, reduce the parking fee from $200 to $150.
So, I have a motion, I have a second on the floor, Tewksbury Public Schools, to adjust the parking fee from $200 to $150 for the 2015, 2016 school year. This requires a roll call vote, Mr. Dick, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Francis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Cutlass, how do you vote?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye as well. Moving right on to school community matters of interest, we'll start over there with you, Mr. Dick.
Nothing to add, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Dick, Mr. Francis.
Yes, I'd like to just say one thing, I'd like to thank, I'd like to thank the board that helped me, the finance committee, for helping us with the school, the aid that was at the annual, tell me, but more importantly, I'd like to thank the community coming out and supporting us, the aid that we need to maintain the services that we want for the kids in this community. Once again, thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Francis. Mr. Cutlass? Okay, and then the only thing I'd like to add is that the school community will be attending the ceremony on Memorial Day, and they'll also be watching the Memorial Day parade this year as well. So, does anyone have any future agenda ideas this evening? Okay, not seeing any. At this time, just so the community know, we will be adjourning, going back into executive session this evening, and so, at this time, I'd like to see if someone makes a motion to enter into executive session.
Make that motion now, Madam Chair.
So, I have a motion, I have a second on the floor, the school community will be entering into executive session to continue discussion relative to collective bargaining with employee groups and individual employees, and the strategy to be followed in our continued for ongoing litigation. This does require a roll call vote to enter back into executive session. Mr. Dick, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Francis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Cutlass, how do you vote?
Aye.
The chair votes aye as well. So, at this time, we will be entering to executive session, and we look forward to seeing everyone at our next scheduled school meeting, which is June 10, 2015, and everybody have a good evening. Thank you.